Okay, welcome everybody to the town board work session of Tuesday, June 18, 2019. First thing on our agenda, continuation of the public hearing of small cell wireless telecommunications facilities. Motion to, we had a opening of public hearing, right?
We want to continue.
It says continuing the public hearing.
It's continuing, yeah.
It does say that.
Continuation, right. So I move to continue open, continue the public hearing on small cell wireless telecommunication facilities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's open, it's wide open. Did we have any changes for this time?
Buhler?
Not this last time, but we've had some changes from prior one, but we really need to workshop and discuss. If you've not yet had the opportunity, because you've had chock full agendas. And it does require probably more time than you would want to spend on it tonight. So I think we should adjourn this for at least two weeks.
Alright, so July...
Okay.
I'm thinking July 16.
You know what, that gives us enough time.
That's also the continuing issue, the leaf blower.
Oh, we shouldn't do that then.
But this one doesn't really, but this one doesn't really take much time.
This one, right, this one.
No, but we still wanted to, we, probably had a good idea of the same thing.
Make all the leaf blowers talk about the.
I don't, you don't want to push this one out early, because we.
Go ahead, shoot it.
This doesn't really take much time, if we just open it and close it.
What about the ninth, ninth is not.
Okay, so.
You're not meeting on the ninth?
What about the ninth?
We're gonna keep you in.
This isn't gonna take a lot of time, it's not gonna make it speak soon.
Well, how long will it take for you to kind of pull together your thoughts and kind of come up with what you think has changed? And perhaps summarize it.
I'm gonna zip.
You mean like in this memo?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like that one? The two of the packet?
Uh.
And it really required to start.
Okay, I'm running you on this one, actually.
Jill, Jill, we're not meeting on the second?
No, we're meeting on the 16th and the 30th.
I, I listened, so I, I put town board dates, so if I didn't put it, I'm assuming I'm not.
So no meeting on the second?
Or the ninth.
Changed anyway? No. So it is the.
Or the 20th, or the 23rd, right? Cause I didn't.
We're meeting on the 16th and the 30th?
Right, okay.
And then we're meeting again on August 13th.
Not meeting on the second?
No.
They can't, that would just tell me.
Do we change on this?
No, it's, I had it in my phone that way.
No, we're never meeting on the 1st.
And no meeting on the 9th either?
Yeah, we were originally meeting on the 9th, but we switched it because we, um, you are coming in on the week of the 17th for, um, the week of the 15th for, uh, the zoning board, uh.
Right, alright, that's on the 16th, we're gonna be on the 16th, right?
No.
I'm, I'm scrubbing the 17th, pardon me.
The 17th. Yeah.
All day, that's a, the all day affair.
So. I don't think, I think, well, I don't think, I think the 30th will be fine, because it's summertime.
It's relief in July?
Yeah.
That's so far out, that's too far out.
No, it's kind of, no, no, but the, the problem is, is that time is at the essence.
If, right, so if we can workshop it.
This isn't gonna take so much time.
So then do it on the 16th, worst case scenario, we'll have to adjourn.
It's not, it's not gonna take much time. So we workshop it next Tuesday and extend the hearing and then workshop and vote on it next Tuesday?
There you go.
There's no public comment, it's just question of best work.
Right.
Fine.
So you adjourn to next Tuesday, if you're ready to vote on it next Tuesday, you can do so, if not, then you adjourn it then to the 16th.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But we just.
All in favor?
Okay.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, did you.
We moved, we moved, yeah, we moved to the 25th.
Did you move, did you move?
I moved.
No, we moved to the 25th.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, to the 25th.
Right.
Four nothing.
Four nothing?
Okay.
Don't call five, you can't say that.
Wait, did everybody, did everybody hear Lisa's fake cough? For the record.
Lisa's not accounted, she's not your person, so.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Uh, next thing. Chappaqua Crossing TCO. Welcome.
It's Chappaqua Crossing.
Everybody's south, this is.
Normally I introduce my team, but I have not. Uh, good evening everyone, Mark Weingarten, partner of Del Bello, Danella Weingarten, Weizen Wiedeker. My pleasure to be here representing, I have to look at this SGP USPFV Chappaqua Retail Owner LLC. In connection with the retail component of the property located for you Bedford Road and Roaring Brook Road, Newcastle, New York. Referred to as you all know, Chappaqua Crossing. Uh, I hope everyone like me has joined Lifetime Fitness and hasn't been there for at least a couple of months like this.
You can't tell?
Yeah, no, everyone's had the chance to do that at this point. Uh, just very briefly going through it with you, on December 13 of last year, your board approved the resolution amending certain conditions of approval, which permitted the deferral of certain permanent traffic improvements and instead substituted the implementation of an interim NPT plan as a condition for the, for the issuance of TCOs for a portion of the retail component of Chappaqua Crossing, Whole Foods and Chase Bank. On January 29 of 2019, as a result of our subsequent request, they were also granted permission for the issuance of TCOs for the Lifetime Fitness, Fidelity Investments and Pet Value. This same request was made last month and it was granted for the retail store Rocks. So there is TCOs for all of those that are out there. Now that these stores have been open and operating and your professionals have had a chance to observe, as you have, the, not just projected environmental impacts, but the actual environmental impacts, uh, you know, on the area. Uh, we are requesting the following, because we believe that things have been going well. The issuance of the temporary CFOs to open the balance of the retail component, there's a, there's a 20,000 feet left of the original 120,000 approved. That would be conditioned upon the T intersection at Roaring Brook and 117 being completed, I'll come back for that. We are also requesting that the balance of the office space, roughly half of the office space, we were told to leave empty while this NPT plan was in effect. And we are asking now to be able to be given permission to go out and get those spaces tenanted. And finally, we are asking and requesting to renew the existing TCOs for the businesses that are up and operating. You did that back January, uh, they were for six months, they expire on July 9, we'll explain the reason why briefly. There are certain conditions that are not there, but we'd like to have those extended as well, so essentially three. The first request is to amend the approval to renew or extend the existing TCOs, which I mentioned are to expire July 9. Uh, when you approved them, the TCOs were permitted based on the to be constructed NPT plan, which was essentially a temporary traffic improvement plan prior to the completion of the permanent improvements. Since that time, it has been implemented and by all accounts has operated successfully. There has been constant communication, there have been reports from your police department, et cetera, with respect to the plan. We are pleased to note that the permanent improvements are expected to be completed by July 20, so we're not gonna miss by that much. We would also like to state for the record that we believe it is not, as a lack of diligent efforts on behalf of the applicant, I think your town staff could document that, there have been some delays caused by Con Edison and New York State DOT for numerous things, and we believe that we're close to that line, but we're not quite there, so we need a little bit more time. The applicant has worked, as I've mentioned diligently to do this, and these conditions also, the ones that remain, they not only are not things that compromise safety, or not only are, you know, they're the types of things that are left. I'll give you an example, it's like you have to have as-built plans that are filed, but you can't have as-built plans until you finish the construction work, so it's impossible to do those things until the work is finished. So when you look through them, anything that we need to do is secured by bonds, the things that are left, so the town is fully protected, so we're asking for those TCOs to be continued. Uh, second, we are seeking TCOs for the balance of the retail space, which I mentioned, which is only 20,000 feet of the additional 100,000. We think the shopping center is operating very well and would like to finish it out and re-tenant, hopefully they'll all feed off each other and create a, an even better environment than has started there. And finally, also the office space, you recall as a precaution, when you were holding us back, you know, to open the Whole Foods, to see how that would be brought in, to open the Lifetime Fitness and to see how that would occur. You said, okay, don't put anyone in the office, half the office space. So now that that is out, up, it's operating, it's all done, the permanent improvements will be done within the month. We would appreciate if we would be able to go forward with the plan as it was originally approved, so those are the requests for this evening.
Can I ask you a question about the, um, the timeline? So when, when we approved the TCOs, as you referred to earlier, it was with a pretty good degree of certainty that you were coming to us with that timeline, that you were going to be able to have all the intersection improvements in place, I think it was by kind of mid-June type of timeframe, right? So certainly within the six months, actually, I think it was, the six months was, was generous and there was the thought that it was actually like, it died back in May, right?
Right.
It was May, I thought it was May.
Um, and so we've missed that and we now believe that it's going to be done July 20th. Um, but the reasons that you gave for why the timeline has slipped is Con Edison and New York State DOT, so things that are out of the direct control of Summer Greenfield, right? And, and so my question is, what assurances do we have that you're gonna hit July 20th?
You, you don't, it could slip another week or another two weeks and these things go. We, we actually got delayed at the beginning, you may recall, we had a number of meetings with you to talk about it. We had a terrible time, it took weeks having to do the NPT plan, getting the various utilities to come in, take their stuff off the poles so we could move poles. This is just reality of how it works. We're now in the final stages, we have Con Ed schedule, could they decide not to come? Could they have an emergency and have to go to another area? They could.
Do you have all the permits from DOT?
July 20th flipped and all this first.
Does everything, do you have all the permits and everything yourself?
As far as I have been told, we have everything we need to finish, there's nothing that's holding us back other than completing the work and coordinating with them to do, to do that. Now, once it goes.
But as I, as I understand, sorry to interrupt, the holdup was that there's a dispute between DOT and Con Ed as to who was going to do certain work. That dispute is being resolved.
Yes.
So any holdup now would be due to the delay in scheduling.
Yeah, and, and by the way, not only was there a dispute, you should also understand this, these things occur. What happened was they went up and they opened up the, the roadway and it turned out that whoever had done the installation years previously, the pipe was too close to the road. It had not been buried to the proper specifications, and then there was a fight over, well, who's gonna lower it? It was a very expensive process, so there were weeks that went on over who's responsible for this, and it was Con Ed pipe. And Con Ed said, well, we'll do it, we'll come back in about seven months. There were calls to the governor's office and all sorts of other things and finally that got resolved. These are the things that happen in construction projects.
By, by the way, just add, when, when people were saying, we're not moving it, it wasn't you guys saying we're not moving it, it was Con Ed and DOT.
I, I, I can assure you, and, and again, your, your staff knows better than anybody else, because they dealt with them on a day-to-day basis. We were ready to work every single day, we had people there every day to work. There are things that you just don't get to control and then it happens, it's unfortunate when it's in public.
How many square feet is the unopened office space?
250, that's half of it. Now again, we don't have anything tenanted, we don't have anything tenanted at the moment.
250,000? So if you have nothing tenanted and we say to you, um, you know, we're not going to give you the ability to start renting until the roadwork is complete, it should be no hardship.
Well, there is a hardship, because we're, you can't go tenant to someone, you can't go, firstly, it's hardship to you too. As long as it stays open, I saw your grievance day sitting there today, it's not good for you either when there's empty, empty office space.
No, but if, if you're saying that the work will be completed by July 20th and you haven't started looking for tenants.
But there, but there's actually, we need TCOs for more reasons than July 20th, because the, the, all of the conditions probably are not gonna be completed to the fall. The things like the as-bills, the things like the bonds being completed, all of those things that have to get finished, there's paperwork and there's, you know, we go through this, this.
But the roadwork will be complete?
The, all the, right, what you're, what, in essence.
So the paperwork, I understand, can be delayed, but the physical work.
Right, the roadwork, well, correct, and we, we don't have a problem, as we said, we don't have a problem conditioning the TCOs for the office and the retail on the completion of the traffic improvements. We don't have a problem with that. That's, that's, in fact, that was our request, it's in the letter, we're saying, if it's not July 20th, as long as it's conditioned, it can't happen until it occurs. So if it's August 1st if it happens, or August 15th, we're willing to say that you give permission for the TCOs, but your building inspector can't grant them to us until these things are concluded.
So you're not looking to lease out the 20,000 square feet?
200,000.
No, no, I'm talking, just talking to retail.
Retail, retail, yeah.
You know, I'm looking to lease the 20,000 square feet, which we, we have no idea who's coming, that's your private.
But they know who's coming, but somebody already.
Well, maybe do with some, but I'm saying we don't know everything that's coming. Um, so you're not planning on putting anybody in, it's, I don't care who knows in terms of, we just, for the sake of, of traffic. You don't plan on actually leasing it until after July 20th or the road is complete?
We would not be saying that, we may lease it, but if it will not be occupied, we will not be permitted to have it occupied until, until, you know, if you condition it that way, which we're, we're willing to accept.
What stops you from coming back to us on July 20th, saying, hey guys, out of our control, it's looking, and the summer months hit, now we're looking at September 5th, making up the date? Um, what, what, is there an additional cost to you when you have a temporary certificate of occupancy as opposed to an actual certificate of occupancy?
Typically, typically.
So is there, is there a reason why, once you get what you want, that it still behooves you and you have an interest in finishing what you were required to finish? Oh, they're getting the heck out of here.
Oh, you're holding all our bonds, we don't get our bonds back? You get, there's, there's a, there's an awful lot of things that are secure here that we don't get back until we finish it, finish our thing. And besides which, it has an impact on your financing with banks, you keep, TCOs versus permit certificates.
So there's a financial interest that you have among others.
There's a, there's a whole number of incentives, but more to the point, if we don't finish our paperwork, for example, sounds silly. You have bonds that you can, you can go, we, we have obligations that are secured with bonds with, with the town.
Yeah, I, I just don't wanna see 200 plus square feet of office space, 20,000 square feet of retail. I don't know how many stores that becomes, I don't know what they are, even if they're ultimately going to be there, I don't wanna see that intersection in turmoil for some reason. Even if it's no fault of your own, come September and we're still dealing, dealing with this.
I, I'm just trying to suggest the, 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 if you're saying, what, what, where is the, um, incentive? To get the traffic stuff done, if that's, for us, at this point, we have to, we've had men on the job, I mean, it's incredibly expensive to be continuing this work, we have to finish. If you're telling, if, there's nothing, there would be no rationale, rational reason for someone to not wanna.
Just sit in and just fasten your.
So I just wanna make sure I understand, I don't mean to be such a thing, but I'm going through your, this condition, this is the status.
Right.
So I'm looking at 1414.
Okay.
Okay, the site must be maintained at no more than 50% of the office space square footage. Uh, excluding the space deferred per service of the town board's finding statements. The applicant shall provide documentation of such to the satisfaction of the town board, it build it, town building inspector prior to the issuance of a TCO. So you can't, the condition was no more renting until, uh, you know, all, all, everything is done.
Correct.
Irruance of a TCO. You're asking for occupancy is less than 50%. Documentation provided to building inspector, the, the applicant is seeking relief from this condition as the permanent improvements required under New York State DOT permit are nearing completion. You're asking for relief, not for the work will be done and then we will get a TCO. If I'm reading this correctly, that's not quite the language that I'm reading.
You're talking about from the letter?
From your letter, to us.
1414, which we're looking at.
First point.
1414.
I just wanna go point by point, because we can all talk, but you know, this is language, and so I think it needs to be specific.
I'm not understanding you.
So he's saying basically that he can't basically rent the building until the town building inspector says all conditions have been met and then issues them a TCO. So they can't rent the other 50%.
Right.
In his current status, half of space is still not rented.
Yeah.
And they're looking, is seeking relief from this condition as the permanent improvements required under New York State DOT are nearing completion. They're seeking relief, which means they want this condition to go away.
Right.
No, we don't want the, well, the condition, the condition to go away that we're asking about
Yeah, that's what they're asking for.
is the condition that you imposed as part of the NPT plan.
Right.
So in other words.
It's, it's, it's. Fine, that we, all of a sudden now they could be 750,000 office space.
No, no, 250,000 square feet of office space.
No.
But they're allowed 500.
We're around 500.
I know, and nobody has a problem with that, when the road works.
No, they're allowed 500, we have 250 there.
Yeah.
There's 200, you, you, we were technically allowed to go forward with the 250, there was no, we made a trade with you and we said, allow us to open 100,000 feet of retail and we will agree not to open the 250 of office. That was the trade we made, and you said, that's fair, in addition to the NPT plan, that's fair, and then the, the traffic is set. We're telling you now that these permanent improvements will be in place by July 20th. So we're, what we're asking you for is the permission that when that happens, even though all of the conditions will not be met by that date, because we can go over, there are other technical conditions that are out there, we're asking for permission to go out and start renting out the office space. We think, by the way, we, we could be talking about renting this space out for years frankly, but that's what we're gonna be trying to do.
So is there a way to make sure that in whatever conditions, so let's talk about this from a legal perspective. I understand that there's paperwork, which, you know, that needs to get stamped.
Right.
And I don't wanna be in a situation where the offices are rented and the paperwork is delayed for months and months and months. But at the same time, I wanna make sure that it's clear that nobody can take occupancy until all of the road.
Rodent, rodent.
It's done, that's what he's asking for.
Right, yeah, that can be clear, yes.
Okay.
That's the issue, it's not the paperwork issue, as long as the work is done, that helps traffic flow correctly, then we're happy.
Okay, and then the next one, which is 1515.
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking about, uh. Oh, we lost her.
If you need assistance, dial your office.
Her phone probably died.
Please hang up.
Does she have a landline? Um. We talk about, um, pedestrian walkway, uh, for this crosswalk to Annandale and. Crosswalk to Annandale and that, you know, you were gonna do it, so basically your response is, we've prepared a concept plan, which was previously shared with the board. So this is the one you brought to us back in like February.
Correct.
Okay? Um, since then, the consultants have identified obstacles.
Yes.
Okay, which is okay, and that the applicant will cooperate with the town in scheduling a meeting with all affected parties following the completion and approval of the work under the current New York State DE, DOT. To the feasibility and the practi, practicability. So my feeling is, is that, you know, nothing has really been done on these paths, other than the obstacles. Have you been able to?
That's not, that's not true.
No, it's not, it's not true, and, and we've explained to you what's been done, so why would you say that?
Could you, well, could, if you sent to us a letter explaining what the obstacles are, so we can better understand what it is.
Behind you, as I understand it, the town said, there, there are freshwater wetlands permits that are required under the DOT, there's permits that are required from the New York City DEP.
Mm-hmm.
There, there are, there's tremendous obstacles to this. Doesn't mean it can't be done, but it's, they're real issues, so our suggestion was that we have a meeting on this particular issue. Now remember, this was not something that was agreed to early on, this was not something that was part of the approvals or whatever there.
I remember.
We came in as another, you know, well, we wanna open Whole Foods and we're like, okay, we're gonna throw another condition on you, you came in. We've done the work, we've spent a lot of money, we've designed out things, we've looked at it, and now we've taken a look, because we've always said, it's if it's practicable. So let's have a meeting, bring in the interest, you know, whoever it is, the, the interested parties for this, and have a discussion. It is a very difficult, expensive, and we'll talk about it.
So I think the concern of the town board, right, is that we don't wanna see that condition, we don't wanna see you walk away from that condition, right? And so when you're saying, we say as a next step, pulling people together to discuss what needs to happen, getting that meeting pulled together, we continue to need you all to take the lead on that piece. We simply do not have the manpower here at the town to be able to lead that independently. And so we, we ask you and we need you to continue to work on that condition and not walk backwards.
We have it, and why, we're, again, it's very different when a private party goes out to try to coordinate meetings with private citizens and others and we've asked for the help, we'll be happy to go there, we'll be happy to bring the professionals. Please also keep in mind that you keep saying you're gonna walk away. We've got 92 townhomes that we're sitting in all sorts of meetings with all of your boards over, that we have our eyes on, it's the same people that you're talking to, they're not going anywhere. So this is not the last piece, we're not walking away and then all of a sudden you're not gonna see us anymore. We have more approvals that we're sitting here with, with months of work ahead of us on, so we're not disappearing.
And by the way.
Good.
The rest, the rest, the, the three, the three, the three homeowners.
Just checking.
Some people might like to, we're not disappearing.
The three, the three, the three homeowners have been, we have been consulting with them and quite honestly, they're on hold right now because we don't know what we're asking of them yet. That's what we're trying to figure out, what actually needs to be done, what's the best way to handle it. So there actually has been a lot of progress on this front, but there's still not a resolution as far as the best way to, to deal with it. And, and, yeah, so a meeting will definitely be helpful, but for anybody to insinuate, listen, I'll, I will take the blame for not keeping everybody in the loop. And I, as I mentioned a little while ago, I'll be more than happy to forward some of the emails, but the, the reality is, 'cause we try to be fair to everybody, is that there has been work on it and there's gonna continue to be work on it, and nobody's letting them off the hook and to, to imply otherwise is just, is just ridiculous, 'cause it's not gonna happen.
Alright, the next question I have about the B line, let's just go through these conditions.
Well, that one I went and spoke to the county executive himself, they.
Okay.
I mean, it's something that's not happening.
It's not happening, 'cause it costs money and they're not going to, it costs time and it costs money. And I will tell you that I went through the same thing at Ridge Hill over in Yawkers with many more people and many more employees that were forced to get off a bus at the bottom of the hill and walk their way up.
That's a gigantic hill, too.
And, and they did not do it, because every time they add to their line, it's more time, it's more effort, it's more money, and they don't have money at the county right now. We spoke to them, we try, it's in our interest, it, it's preferable to us to have the bus stopping on our side.
Yeah.
Right, it makes convenience access.
It's better for, it's better for our tenants.
Gives credibility to, yeah.
So I, I can tell you, I, this one I can personally tell you that we invested time and effort and asked and we rejected. So there's just nothing we can do about that.
Fair enough, thank you for trying.
And we were asked for best efforts, so, you know, that, we did.
Do you wanna talk about what we have?
What's that?
Well, I, listen, we talked to George, I mean, I, literally, we, we talked to, they don't have the money.
They just don't have the money. Maybe we'll get the sales tax.
I see, you couldn't, you couldn't get it done, I'm surprised.
Maybe we'll get the sales, we'll get the sales tax tomorrow and maybe, maybe we'll have, maybe we'll have some.
Is that what you're telling everyone?
One, one of the other issues which, which I, I, which I, I harped on a few times.
Yeah, he really wanted to get that picture.
One of those, which I harped on a few times to, to the laughing chagrin of some people, I think, who, um, like to mock my obsession with it, but whoop-a-whoop. Uh, and 117, that's just an ugly, I think you laughed and chuckled at me when I wrote back, both of you did.
I've been pushing this for like a year, ever since your little mishap.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you're talking about sightlines?
Yes, the sightlines.
We are, we are absolutely working on that, we've been talking, you gotta talk to, I believe it's Bob Cioli that's been working with our people on that, I apologize, 'cause Dave's not here. But there are, there is discussion of cutting certain tree line back and think, we are gonna do whatever is determined by the town is the right thing to do. They've been studying it, we've been working with them, we're waiting for your direction.
So if, if, if the possibility was moving earth, if the possibility was removing trees, you're, you're.
We're willing to do it, but we're being told that they're gonna be cutting, I think the idea was to cut back tree, the tree line or whatever. It's a safety issue and we've agreed to comply and we're waiting, again, it's in the town's hands to tell us what they want us to do with that. So that's where we are with that.
We're just gonna, we're just.
But you're committed to it irrespective of what it may have been.
In condition and we, we will comply.
So we just need to push harder, that's what I'm hearing you say?
I don't think it's pushing harder, I think, I, I think some of this stuff is a little more complicated than you give credit to and these engineers, they draw plans and then they have to take, you know, they gotta figure out what's the best way to do it.
I, I, I was hoping that I was going to be wrong, I was so concerned about the horrific traffic that was going to be there and the danger and I, I think that you collectively, the town and, and, and Summer Greenfield have done a good job in maintaining that intersection and making it safe and I'm sure it will be, you know, better going forward, and I'm thrilled about that. Um, I just, the back of me in my mind says, you know, we, we get too far down the proverbial road, that eventually some things won't. The fear is, not that we're gonna give up on them, but you know, you come to a point where we just gotta get over the finish line and we suck it up, and I don't wanna see that happen.
I get it, but I just remind you, as I said, there's 92 townhomes there and we have our eyes set on that as well, so we're, again, we're not going anywhere.
You're stuck with us and we with you for the.
And you with, yeah, I mean, it's plain simple, that's a big piece to this project, it's not, you know.
And by the way, with the retail, you know, I mean, it, it's, you know, whether it's September, I'm sorry, whether it's, uh, July 9th or July 20th, it's not like a retail, a store's just gonna open at the snap of a finger. The stores that are ready to, will be ready to open in the near future, we, we know what they are, they're Verizon Wireless, they're Compass Realty, they're Northern Westchester, they're Wellness Center, whatever they're calling it, and I think that's pretty much it. If Starbucks actually comes out of that, I don't think they're gonna be ready till September anyway. So that's what it is.
And what's, it's, it's a possible restaurant.
I, I am less, I am less worried about 20,000 square feet of retail than I am of 250,000 square feet of office space when the average cubicle now is 20 square feet.
Which they have every right, which they have every right, which they have every right to open when they get their CO, which is a question of a month early, just on market.
Well, I can tell you this, I think you will wind up economically in my, unless, if you get that.
I, I think there is.
It increases our, it increases our commercial tax base, which is something we should want.
No, I understand, but, uh, all I'm just saying is, I do think that with the roads not being completed, to open up 250,000.
The roads aren't gonna be completed.
No, no, it's, it has to be, it has to be.
Everybody repeat after me, roads will be completed, yeah.
Right, yes, we, that is, that is a condition that is not, it will have to be completed, otherwise they're not getting.
No objection.
Nobody's even asking for that.
So it's, it's important that anyone who's watching at home, all our fans, understand that.
Could we ask you to put these conditions on some sort of a regular reporting timeline for us, where maybe on a, you know,
That have been.
Five monthly basis, you could provide the town board and the planning board with a status update?
We, we, we actually, yes, when we actually have been doing that back and forth with council, there's a grid, you're happy to share it, I mean, you know, so it doesn't, it, it comes into the town.
I don't see.
It doesn't necessarily get to you.
Let's just start, just, these other conditions, though.
Right, but. Well, I think it does.
Like the Annandale Trail, and those were the planning board conditions, I like.
Okay, so.
Right, some of it's before them and some of it's before us.
We may not have shared all the planning board conditions with you, that, but we could, it's all, it's in there, 'cause we have done that with the planning board, so.
Well, one of the other things was, I don't, I don't think it's a big deal, but just to get it out there, was this thing about the trails. You do have an obligation to create these onsite trails, you're basically asking, say, hey, let's do it after the construction, townhomes, because it doesn't really make sense to have trails going through at the construction site.
Do an active construction site.
Correct, and, and it's a planning board condition, though, the reason we're not discussing with you tonight, it wasn't your condition, it's theirs
Right.
and we are asking for relief from that. Again, it's not relief to not do the condition, it's a deferral of the condition, and for construction reasons, it, for safety reasons, it makes sense to do it that way.
Wait, did everybody catch Lisa's fake cough?
I did.
Yeah.
That was three?
I just saw you, I just thought.
Alright, so the, the take home, I think, for everybody is that you're not avoiding your responsibility, it's going to be done, it has to be done. You're here for a long time, we're not allowing these openings without the ultimate road being, the road being the condition needs to be.
And as long as we go on the record, these are Felix's obligations, not mine.
Correct, council.
As representative of, whatever it's called.
Absolutely, I'm authorized to speak for him, but it is an obligation, so.
Yeah.
What's the biggest thing with the road right now?
I don't touch my client's stuff.
I'm sorry, what's the biggest, like, um, next big obstacle with the road, is there anything?
I, I think it's, I think it's Con Edison finishing its work.
But what work do they have to do, they have to move another, a corner sign?
I don't need, I, I, I honestly, I don't wanna speak enough, but I understand there is certain things that they still have to do, and then there's permits that have to be obtained from the New York State DOT.
Oh, I know the permits, I remember.
Those are the last pieces, but there is so much.
I thought episode, we have all the permits, yeah.
Yeah, I thought I was asking a question.
Yeah, he, he's talking, he's talking about the final, uh, final.
No, 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 final, final permit, you have permits to do the work, but then they have to certify them too.
I see.
Right, of the.
It's just like with the tent, they have, they, they, in the right of way, they're permitting, they have to say, you're finished, you, you've completed your job, then otherwise you're.
I see.
But the road will be open, functioning, before they sign our final sign off.
Right.
It's, it's functioning right now.
No, I'm talking about like the turning lanes.
No, but, right.
Not very well.
Yeah, no, it's not really functioning right now.
I'm talking about the turning lanes are gonna be open before you get the final sign offs.
It's correct, it'll have to be.
Right. Right.
It'll be tested and, and.
Right, but when we say the road compro- permits are done, we, we're talking about functioning, we're talking about functioning roadway.
The physical construction work is done.
Well, this can't, we can't keep it the way it is, there are dangers, we're gonna go westbound, and we're in book of the wrong side, potentially, but.
Okay, we're talking about turning lanes, functioning, operating, right.
That, those, that, those issues are gonna be addressed, that, that issue is gonna be addressed.
Function, and that intersection.
Right, well.
And also, sort of around Whole Foods itself, I mean, is that completed, that whole road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, that is.
Yes. And the, and the good, the good news is too, that this will finish with the school closed, so it's nice that it's happening in the summertime,
It's beautiful, yeah.
so that whatever, whatever little things they have to do to get finished, it'll happen without less, without traffic there.
The only, the only thing that's happening is that they're, they're cleaning the dirt, they they basically have seventeen, how many tons, seventeen thousand tons of dirt,
Of dirt.
that they basically have taken their debris out and making it the nice topsoil, to ship it off. Like a cycling type of project, yeah.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, just go to the.
That's okay. We're so directly.
So, so the next.
Kind of playing out there, okay.
Yes, yes.
So the next step on this would be for me to prepare a resolution so you can consider the setting next meeting.
Okay, next meeting is next week?
Yes.
Yes.
And the planning board will consider the set of their July second meeting. And the next on the agenda is the Chapel Crossing shuttle agreement.
That, I have to tell you, I think I need for the next meeting, because I don't know anything about it, we haven't been participating in it, so.
Well. Right, we provided a copy, we went to David, Dave Walsh, and Jan has been copied on it, but I know your legal still needs review, it was reviewed a year ago, there's been some modifications and.
Just so you know, we, we were checking, because Felix and David were out of town today, um, we were checking the agenda, I didn't find out the shuttle was on till about five o'clock tonight, so I did put a call in to them, but I I didn't get them, so I just don't have information about that considering.
Now, fair enough, Dave Walsh has indicated that, but for the scheduling of the inclement weather, the agreement reflected their, their understanding from the one that was negotiated last year, and then the updates for today, subject to review with any comments council may have.
I mean, so it's clear, we are, we are right now using the shuttle, right, I mean, we're, we're, we're.
No, you're not using the shuttle.
No. You have your own shuttle, our own, no, our own, we are, we are complying, we are complying with the conditions of the approval
They have your own shuttle. Not using a town's electric shuttle. Yes.
to, to, to have the shuttle operating, it is operating, this is about a request of the town to have us change.
You know, I, I was coming up the hill.
Well, it's honoring an agreement that has been discussed for, for years between the Sunday Council and the town with regard to using the electric shuttle
Yeah, it's basically.
that the town purchased specifically for Sunday.
Which we got a hundred thousand dollar grant.
Yes, yes.
Um, you know, I, I, I was coming up King Street now from, from the Hamlet, and I recognized a gentleman who worked at Chapel Crossing. That's a far hike, so I, I gave him, offered a ride, gave him a ride all the way up, up, because I'd seen him walking at night with a flashlight along one seventeen, on many occasion after ten o'clock, and.
This is a construction worker?
No, no, employee of Whole Foods.
No, no.
An employee of Whole Foods.
And I asked him, I said, how many people do you, you know, had this issue at night, how many people should you share a cab, you know, if you get home late? And he said, you know, sometimes we pull together, he mentioned that he didn't have much money, so, you know, he just started working there, and, and he wouldn't join in, and he would just walk. Uh, and he had a health condition, which doesn't matter, you don't know who he is, and doesn't need to go into detail, but nonetheless walked. So I offered to drive, to, to him, call me tonight when you're up at ten thirty, I'll, I'll drive you back, um, and, you know, that's not a sustainable thing to do. You know, as much as I'd like to be helpful.
Since it's ten fifteen, you're gonna be like.
Yeah. I got it, you're right, but, but the point is.
Oh, so I'm usually a ride hound, so.
Yeah.
That's right.
Not on Tuesday nights, I'm not, not, but anyway, I'll, I'll keep it aside, I told him I'd, I'd help him out. So, you know, even though that there is going to be a final agreement, and even though you have a responsibility now, and it may not be directly your issue, maybe more of a Whole Foods issue, it's problematic, because that, it's just a dangerous, frightening, scary place to be at night with a flashlight, you know, there was an accident, there's always accidents, just, you know, on that road, not always, but they happen within a regularity, so I would just ask if you can speak to Whole Foods and speak to, to your, you know, Summer Greenfield, and say, it can't be sustainable, you can't allow this to happen, for their sake, but it's not, it's not my burden.
Well, yes, you, you always can talk to somebody else, you mentioned.
It's maybe more of a Whole Foods issue, but.
I think, I think the town can also talk to Whole Foods at this point, they're, they're, they're a citizen of your community, right there.
We have, and I think Rob is. Yeah, but it would be helpful just on your end, too, that, you know, you're the developer of the site, and there's a lot of stuff to do there,
I understand.
and behooves them to have a good relationship, because there's going to be more feet on the ground for them there, um, but pressure from both sides to accommodate their.
Agree.
their, um, employees. Let's just start charging a few bucks.
Whenever we're gonna use those electric scooters, we're waiting for that.
Subtle my income.
That's right, yeah, right.
So are there any questions on the shuttle agreement, I think we've.
No, we'll say bump it over for, right, we're gonna bump it?
Northern Westchester, right?
Yes.
We'll wait and see what they pass.
Yep, we'll just bump it. And it was not for discussion, not for action, so.
But you need feedback from.
The council, yes.
On the, the shuttle, the shuttle, we'll, we'll, we'll get that by next, by next week, I guess.
Shuttle. What Janet has. Yes.
It's gonna be great.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thanks, thank you.
Alright, thanks, have a good night.
Take it easy.
Okay.
So, um, food trucks, you'll see there's a memo in the pack, as well as some laws from other communities, there was a discussion or a request from the board that, um, look into the issue of allowing food trucks, and we need some guidance from the board as to what do you envision? Do you envision food trucks being regulated from a land use perspective, where someone can put it onto their private property, or if they can lot them to be a food truck, or more with the solicitor's permit, where it's allowed to remain on a public right of way, either for special occasions or limited hours?
Does it not be mutually exclusive?
No, no, could, could be, could be both, no.
I mean, I think that, I think it can be attacked from both angles, I think, uh, if it's benefits the community, which I think a lot of people would get excited about these opportunities, um, just drawing people downtown for shops, and drawing people downtown to other restaurants potentially, that don't have to compete, I don't know what the foods are gonna be, but, um, I think we should find ways to try to make that happen, uh, because it'll just make downtown more exciting and, and, uh, more welcoming, so. I rely on you to figure out, you know, legal jargon.
Yeah, you know, I get you, once I understand what your intent is.
That's just, that's just my position, I don't know if people share in that position.
Well, I mean, my, my intent was, we, we have, there's nothing in our code right now to stop a food truck from pulling up to our train station and sitting there every night from five to eight, just like an ice cream truck would, the only thing that we are allowed to regulate is an ice cream truck.
No. No, the only one that is permitted right now is an ice cream truck, because it's, it allows, it puts a time period in which you can remain at the spot. So if a food truck came along, they typically are there for a dedicated period of time, food, ice cream truck, I believe, under the solicitor's, it's only been, was it thirty minutes? At, at a location, then has to move along.
But I, I thought there was something in our code that basically they would, that they said we have no, we have no mechanism in our code to enforce food trucks right now.
No, no mechanism to allow food trucks.
To, or to stop them from coming.
No, to let them come, to let them come.
No, no, we, we, we can, we can stop them from coming, because they, they would be on your public right of way with, in violation, without having a solicitor's permit, because they're soliciting,
Right, still.
and right now, and if for longer than thirty minutes, they wouldn't be allowed.
It shouldn't be, in my view, it shouldn't be something more complicated that they have to jump through hoops, you know, especially as.
No, but you want them to be insured, you want some basic requirements.
Well, what is, what is, yes, what is, what is, what I'm referring to here is, you know, what does it take to a solicitor's permit, what does it take to do all these things?
To pay two hundred bucks and show your insurance certificate.
Whatever it may be, the point being, it should be something, just like we're looking at allowing people to fix their properties, to make them more user friendly,
Right.
and to develop their properties if they want, it shouldn't be too many hurdles for them to do so, um.
But, but do you want a food, if you allow a food truck to be similar to, um, an ice cream truck, for example, there are certain areas where they're allowed, how long can they stay there, those positions, and on what days of the week, can it be, so that we'd have to coordinate with the police department to get a sense of where are the right places for a food truck, and what are the hours? Does the town board see you be able to be, park your food truck from six in the morning till eight at night?
Can it be, can it be, flatbed from a special permit, because an event may require, if we wanna have something going on till eleven o'clock at night at town, downtown, keep it all late, why wouldn't we want that to be?
Exactly, that's what we've, you would really have two categories, if you will, right, on special events, you know, art night, or July fourth.
Right.
You can do that, because you're sponsoring it, so you can bring food trucks and allow it, question is, what about on like a Friday night or a Saturday morning? What times and where do you want food trucks?
Think about it, what happens at concerts in the park, somebody wants to come and park somewhere?
We already have food trucks that come for concerts.
Right, the parks department arranges it, coordinates it.
And it's.
Right.
Yeah, we're not against food trucks, this is just a question of regulating, like other towns have done, with, with the onslaught of food trucks, it's not unreasonable to, to regulate them.
Right, so where do you want them, how long, and are you concerned, gotta make sure it balances the competition with your brick and mortars?
Yeah, I, I think we should engage our brick and mortars to see what, just to hear what they have to say, whether or not we agree or disagree is a separate issue, but we'll hear what they have to say, because input's gonna be important.
Exactly.
But just curious, when, a truck can't stay in the same place for more than thirty minutes, the ice cream truck, it's a location. Fifty feet away, can theory, pu 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 pu, stop again?
I think, well, if he ends up to, to, to be honest with the police to enforce, I think they would probably say, you've gotta, you know, move significantly more.
I'm, I'm sort of leaning towards.
Lisa has something to say.
So I'm sort of leaning towards, you know, could we kind of figure out an expedited kind of process? Because I would hate to see, you know, a food truck there every Saturday, let's say, downtown, taking up parking spaces, so then people can't come. But if there's an event you certainly want to, and maybe we do wanna say, you know, every whatever Sunday from this time to this time, we're allowing food trucks, but do we wanna allow that kind of wholesale, or just have an easier permit process, if there are certain requirements they have to meet, as long as they meet them, we can grant the permit?
I, I think we have to engage, you know, again, the restaurant business folks, and retail folks, and see what their thoughts are, uh, as well as just residents, so.
Well, I mean, I think we have to decide whether we wanna have food trucks be a permanent restaurant option somewhere, so for example, at the intersection of one thirty-four and, um, Route one hundred.
What I tried.
The hot dog, the hot dog truck.
The hot dog truck, same things at nine A and one thirty-four.
Right, right, right.
Right, right.
Bring the street dogs.
Get me a park.
That's a nice picture.
So, I mean, I, but I mean, the thing is, it could also, well, the guy that get me part comes, turns this thing on, waits for every kid to run over, feeds them, then gets out.
I see, yeah.
But I guess to a certain extent, would you wanna have like a designated area where food trucks could gather, almost like a food court?
Or, or alternative.
I mean, and then have it sort of be permanent, so that people would know, like, there's the gyro man, and there's the ramen man, and then there's the, you know, vegetarian lady, and there's like whatever, they could count on that food being there, or do you just want it for special events?
You know, I guess, uh, that's a good question, and another question I think is, and Nick, can you, could you say that you're limited to borrowing a, an exemption or a special permit to X amount of weekdays in a row, or X amount of weeks a year, or X amount of times, period, the end, so that we don't have the same hot dog truck, if we do this, sitting in the same spot or applying for a permit, we have grounds to deny them that permit, a- and that question of one, statement number one would be, I think that food trucks, the perception maybe that it's gonna compete with local restaurants, and that may be true, but just because someone's coming to Le Jardin does not mean that they also, or, or go to the, the cool pizza, or the cool, I shouldn't use pizza as an example, cool place, the, the food truck does not mean that they were gonna otherwise eat at a restaurant in town.
So the, the answer to your questions, we gotta remember, we're talking about two different areas, a food truck in the public right of way, that's within your discretion to regulate, you can certainly say you're only gonna allow it between X number of hours, X number of days, X number of, uh, food permits issued, and X number of times that that can be used, sort of rotated, if you will, you can do that. The other question is, do you wanna allow food trucks to be located on, on private property, that's land use, that's a special use permit, that's site plan approval. Do you wanna allow, I don't think you wanna go there yet, I think what I'm hearing is you wanna think about allowing it on the public right of way, because you can regulate some more, you have more control, and then maybe you should become more familiar with it, you would allow it on a private parking lot.
I mean, I think we need to start first with looking at the public right of way, and I think that we need to have, as Lisa's suggesting, I think Lisa's a hundred percent right, I think we just need to figure out what our permitting process is, and what our regulations are around having those trucks there, with the understanding that it's meant to both expedite the process for a food truck to be able to come in, and also be a backstop to protect our existing restaurants from competition, so we need to draft something with those two goals.
Right, and I think once we draft something, then we'll be in a position to get comments from the brick and mortars, because then they'll have something to react to.
Yes.
So I think I, this has been helped, I have a sense of what you want, we'll meet with the police department, get a sense of where is the location where it would make sense.
I mean, you could create some excitement downtown, especially once there's that common space where people can gather, you know, you know, if you can really draw people downtown, it'll be a real boon.
Absolutely.
Well, with food trucks, I mean.
Yeah, 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 you know.
There's no question, food trucks are great sometimes for events, it's just that if you have, once, if I owned a restaurant, I wouldn't appreciate a food truck stopping in front of my store for half an hour during dinner time.
But I think there are things to consider.
I think, I, I think, if I, if I was a restaurant owner, I wouldn't be very happy with that, and by the way, nobody has a problem with that hot dog truck, but the fact is, if somebody all of a sudden opened up a Jewish deli nearby, they would have a problem with it, you know, I mean, these are people that are paying rent, paying their taxes, and we should look out for them.
A hundred percent, that's why we wanna engage them, but also, I don't think we should have the assumption that someone's not gonna go to local, because they were, or Le Jardin, for example, because they're going to a particular food truck on a particular day.
I, I think if you plop a barbecue truck.
I think it's a different dining experience, I, I think we're gonna.
We'll engage them, we'll, we'll speak to them.
Yeah, we'll find out.
Okay, I've got my guidance.
By the way, we have, we have, we're gonna have food trucks at the summer concerts, we're gonna have, we're gonna, we're gonna have food trucks at the summer concerts, but that was after years of trying to get the local merchants to do it, and they just didn't have, they just didn't have the manpower and or, uh, equipment to do it. So that's why we're having food trucks there, because you gotta, we, we felt that's a good idea, have, have food, and it's fun, food trucks are great, so, I would love to have a food truck event, too, which I talked back about, at a beer festival, but it doesn't mean we don't regulate them.
Beer fest. Yeah, I, I think we'll, I think we'll do that.
Um, the next is the Zonal Sanitary Sewer District, this was a petition by a, a resident to, um, uh, basically be included in the Zonal Sewer District, she has a selling centric, and she needs to be able to hook up. So there's gonna be authorization to set a public hearing, um, at the next, um, right, the twenty fifth?
Yeah. Is this a hack-in, do we have any information on this?
This was in, in last week's.
It was in last week's, we found about the signed petition.
We had to wait for, for you to turn the paper.
Yeah, so, um, we had talked about, there was a memo from Jen Gray about petitions and the right to someone to opt into the, the sewer district.
Okay. Memorable conversation for me.
Yes, well, really, sewer district, and you won't spell that?
Uncrushed.
Okay, so, yeah, we, we will take in and recirculate that to everybody, um, okay, so we're gonna put it on for the twenty fifth for authorization to, um, set a public hearing, okay?
And then the public hearing.
We'll be on the sixteenth if we can do it.
Okay.
Alright, you just have to make sure that you can do the copy notice, alright?
Okay, yep.
Um, and I think Jen also sent an email with directions, because there has to be.
Go to the controller's office, and.
樍 authority to the controller, so let's talk about that yesterday, and make sure that everybody's on the same page with it.
Yes.
Um, uh, Chapel Cross Hamlet rezoning contract amendment number one, on page one twenty-three, um, this is with, for Kimberly Horns, there's an additional, um, conference call that the committee has asked for. Video conference with the downtown working groups for two hours, and the consultants, we changed the vote to be from here.
That's what we have scheduled, right, that's the Zoom one.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna need to, um.
A two-hour conference call is gonna cost us ten thousand dollars?
No, a separate meeting day for public, it's both.
It's like a day, day means.
So this is asked for the, uh, the terms of the contract.
It's, it's a call and a new meeting day?
Yeah, it's a call and another meeting.
I, it's a second meeting, it's an additional public.
After workshop, too.
Okay, alright.
Right, so, so, so we, we adding more public involvement?
Got it, this is not just a two-hour conference.
Right, which is.
And that's one, that's, that's one of the, that's one of the concerns.
No, 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 no. Here, see the, the three things, additional video conference, separate meeting day for the public information sessions?
Uh-huh. No, I'm just seeing this for the first time, so.
But we, we wanna make sure that there's public access and public involvement, more so, and on the side of caution.
Yep.
Um, and to let the board know that there are going to be, uh, a couple of ELQ change orders coming along. Um, the full death reclamation of Lower King is not in the original scope of work, WSP did not include it, um, due to the fact that we put in a gas main, a water main, and sanitary sewer. Um, due to the fact that we put in a gas main, a water main, and a sanitary sewer down that narrow road, the concrete bed has been significantly disturbed, and if you just put a um, if you don't fully reclaim it, the road will wave, won't be able to set it, so basically the road's gonna fail. So this is additional.
Weren't we always gonna do those things?
Yeah, but it wasn't part of the original contract. We we've been talking about it for a long time, but it's actually not in the original scope of work.
But it had this.
No, I understand the full depth reclamation was not a part of the original scope of work, but weren't we always replacing the gas lines, the sewer line, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah. Well, we were doing, yes, yes.
And so and so why did they not understand that that was going to be necessary?
Because. Because they're, they had adequacy problems, adequacy problems.
I don't think, I think we're talking about WSP or WE- ELQ, are we?
We're not doing it in North Greeley.
No, we're talking about, we're talking about WSP. Why wasn't it included in the original scope of work that was bid out for ELQ? Why are we once again having to face an expensive change or work that should have been for ELQ?
Yes, the WSP.
We will do it, we will do with that.
But it wasn't. We, but we're not doing the uh, I'm not defending WSP, believe me. But all I'm saying is, we're not doing it on every single area, we didn't do it on North Greeley, we didn't do that across.
Right, no, no, so so.
No, but they knew about this, this was something that came out of the out of the.
Yeah, they they knew about it.
Yeah.
I understand that, but maybe whatever their thinking was, was the same as what the thinking was on North Greeley. We replaced it down there too.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible, we we do do the similar work on North Greeley, and that only has to be.
All those things we replaced. We replaced all those things on North Greeley too. That's my only point.
Only has to be overlaid, so. Um, anyway, so there's that. The second thing is, is that there is, so, let me just update you as to where we are on the um the traffic pole at the intersection of King and Greeley. Um, we have a new location for the traffic pole that is no longer located on private property, is now within the state's right of way. What we are waiting for is, because the the um pole has been shifted, the location of the traffic heads,
Um.
signal heads on the mast arm had been shifted as well.
Mm-hmm.
So there's a load, there's a load analysis that has to be redone. It is proprietary to Valmont, who manufactures it.
Of course, I understand.
So we have to pay for their engineer to reanalyze the load, to dictate whether or not the forty five foot arm is okay, or if we need to refabricate a longer arm for what?
The wider.
The the heads, because it's a bad.
It won't affect the, they won't affect the footing, more?
So so so.
It may affect, yes, it may affect the footing, which is why we can't pour the footing yet, and why we may have to take and um uh order a new mast arm, but before we do anything, we need to, we.
Do the engineering engineer.
Okay, so number one, we knew, when I say we, the 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 uh construction folks, for lack of a better term, knew where the pole was going a long time ago.
We changed the poles.
But number two, number two, you, we have, unfortunately, the the engineer has an incentive to say it's not gonna work properly, because he works for the company that we would have to buy the longer arm from.
No, 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 New York State, I said, New York State DOT is the one who's requiring it. So New York State DOT approved WSP's plans that placed our tele- our our pole in on private property.
I missed stating, I'm I'm maybe so clear.
No, it's a sub, it's a sub. No, no, Valmont is the the the.
No. For the pole?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, but they only have, but they they only can, their engineer has a proprietary way to examine it.
Yes, absolutely.
So we have to rely on him, who's the one who's gonna get us, potentially the new, right, so it's like, you know, he's has an incentive to say it's not okay.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. He may. Uh, there's nothing, un- unfortunately, I cannot get New York State DOT approval without the engineer um sign off that the loading is proper. So, uh, we don't get, we don't get to go place go.
And so what's the timeline on that now, could we know?
Um, it supposedly everything was forwarded to Valmont today. Bob Seoli tells me it should take um four hours for an engineer to do it. I don't know what that press date is.
So four weeks later.
And, you know, anybody's guess, at at this point, sh- should we have it by the end of the week? Absolutely. Will we? I certainly wouldn't.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Making me sort of predictions on that, but that one will be coming, so.
And then what's the, okay, so then we we get the response from Valmont, what's the turnaround time for DOT to then?
They've been expediting, you can't tell. So, yes, they're expediting this, and um, I'm, we're we're almost there, um, and supposedly that's the last step, and we're good to go.
You know, this this is certainly no, not a testament to you, because I've been busting your tail on this, even work, this has nothing to do with you. Um, and I know Rob and and Ivy have been in front of this for a while too. You look at the downtown, you have one subcontractor ripping up sidewalk. The town is saying, don't rip up unless you have, you're ready to fix and fill and lay the concrete, and they, the other sub is not doing their job. Again, this is not your fault, it's, they're not doing their job, and it sits here, no matter what we preach to them to do it, and I gotta know Rob and and Ivy have been in in the front of this.
Say that, God, keep going.
Yeah, no, no, I'm serious, I, because I.
Well, you're gonna make me some more.
Well, no, both of you, um, but it it just, it just sort of shocks me that we're stuck, and I know there could be consequences down the road for them, should we go that route, and just collectively in general with some of the work that's been done. But now we have a rain for a week, so they, even if they were ready, they can't do it.
I I gotta say, and this is killing me so.
So when when do we, when do we expect, because there's some people who have very legitimate rights. I don't know whether or not there's an issue with ADA compliance now, even though we're gonna make it compliant, but if I can't hop around, and I'm full able-bodied, how do people get around, and it's just not fair.
Oh, there is. Yeah.
It's 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 miserable, and I listen, I'm I'm, you know, I I get it, though unfortunately, you know, so it it poured today, not just like, you know, not a little bit, it would be, yeah, but like, but no, but it does, because.
Right, that, but right, that that's that's the one of them, this, for a week, no, I understand, but like, last week, where were they, why why weren't they falling behind?
Well, I I mean, I guess I'd like to understand, Nick, from a legal perspective, to what recourse does the town have at this point? Because when we, when Jill and I sit in a meeting.
I guess here we should discuss that in executive session.
Yeah, okay, all right, but, you know, I I feel like when we, when we sit in a meeting and we direct ELQ to stop ripping up sidewalk if you're not ready to come, if the, your subcontractor's not ready to come back, A and K is not ready to come back,
Right, that's what I was hinting to.
and do the pouring, and they keep going in spite of that direction, I mean, it's it's.
If it, if this was us as attorneys, it would be ineffective assistance of counsel.
It's enormously frustrating.
Right.
Yes, right.
I mean, seriously, it's 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 putrid.
It, yeah, mm-hmm, yes, yes, it would.
You can just holler and holler, and then holler again. So, we should discuss this in executive session.
Yeah.
Well, tomorrow we'll be hollering some more.
Yeah, I know, I'm ready, eight thirty AM, we're gonna holler.
All right, oh, good. So, yeah, there we are. Uh, wanna do some payment claims? Oh, um, we have a, we have a couple other just proposed actions. Um, Christina, is there?
There should be, everyone should have.
No, 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 but is there the the documentation? Oh, yeah. Okay, so in your, um, there is a request for a waiver of a um a tax penalty. Um, we have um um, someone who was hospitalized um um from April twenty third to May twenty uh first at Phelps, you'll see that there's a uh a note from the doctor, and so um um, it was an ICU situation, and thankfully, it's uh they're they're out, which is a great thing, and so um, um as per uh council's instructions, this is one of the limited situations where the board is in a position to take away the the penalty. So um, that's gonna be under one of your proposed actions. Um, and the last thing is, there's an authorization to set public hearing for a landmark designation, it's the Ramon House.
Does setting of landmark designations then have any bearing on what can be done with that property, since that's something we've discussed in the past?
It's not, it's not binding, I would, it's not binding.
Okay.
And this was actually they asked.
So you can designate this as a landmark and the property could still?
Can be sold.
Can sold and or developed.
And torn down.
It's like a magical line of of.
It's more uh ceremonial.
Yeah, it's not like a New York State or New York City landmark where there are restrictions.
All right, payments claims?
And it is the owner who's uh asking the requesting.
Who's, I moved to approve payment claims amount of one hundred forty three thousand eight hundred seventy dollars, eleven cents listed in summer feature recording report, detailed voucher to report, each prepared on June eighteenth of what this glorious year. Checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant list on Wednesday, June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Hi.
Aye. I move to accept your time, but a police officer, police chief, this is, uh, should be more ceremonial than this, but Police Chief Charles Ferry, effective June twentieth, two thousand nineteen, the town would like to thank him for his thirty five years of service, and that couldn't be more sincere, he's done a fabulous job, and has been a great chief, and well as an officer for the town of Newcastle.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Hi.
I move to authorize the hiring of Matthew Coleman Harris to the position of seasonal labor within the highway unit for the Department of Public Works, the rate of twelve dollars per hour, effective June twenty fourth, two thousand nineteen, for a period of ten weeks.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Poozy Green with Bullbrook Swimming Tennis Club, just a pool by town they can.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Do I have to put an amount in there?
No, yeah, it's for sixteen thousand dollars.
As a amount of fifteen thousand.
Right.
Fifteen.
As amended, right, second, fifteen, fifteen, yeah, and also, um, and for um tennis, um, I think it's a D twenty split.
Okay.
Second.
I second, as amended.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm looking for the waiving of tax penalties for two thousand nineteen town taxes for SBL ninety one dash eleven dash two dash three.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm moving to public hearing with regard to designated Borough Ramon House, one one six Hawks Avenue, Austin, a town Newcastle historic landmark for Tuesday, July ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye, I move to a.
We we we're not meeting on the nineteenth, sixteen.
Yeah, I guess you like that.
I'm sorry, as amended to the uh sixteen.
Yeah.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have moved to approve the contract amendment number one for King and Horn for the Chapel West Hamlet zoning project, amount of ten thousand three hundred dollars, additional services is set forth in the amended amendment contract.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.